All right. Okay, let's call this budget workshop meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And let's start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic.
Republic.
For which it stands. One nation.
Nations.
Under God.
God.
Indivisible. Liberty.
Justice.
All right. Eric, do we have anybody for public speak here? So I think we have.
We appear to have Elaine Zuccard and Anne Creme.
Okay. So.
Hi Elaine, I just joined in there to give a listen.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
Okay.
Yep.
Hi, this is Anne Creme.
Hi Anne.
I just want to say I support the budget that was approved by the BOE.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? Just that?
Just that.
Okay.
BOE budget.
Okay, thanks for attending.
Okay, that appears to be everybody you have for public speak.
Okay, perfect. All right, let's jump into the budget. Um, just a quick correction, Eric, for you. On this, I found an error on one of the lines, row 684, which is the AES Board of Education budget. The department request number is wrong. It should be four million one twenty-two seven eighty-seven. I went back and looked at the requested presentation from February 9th, and that's what they requested. So can we fix that column G?
Yeah.
And then fix the dollar change and the percent change H and I as well.
Uh, the changes in both automatically.
Okay. All right. Got some background noise. Do we have everybody on mute? That phone number? Oh, Joanne, go ahead.
I just, I was gonna ask about a change too Diane. I'm not sure if I'm right or not, but if you, on the revenue, you know, that revenue sheet where you can see the mill rate. I had asked, I hope.
Hold on one second. Eric, can you mute that phone number? I think, because it's unmuted.
Yes.
Where are we getting the feedback from? Okay.
I'm not caring.
All right, on the revenue tab, okay.
Yep, the revenue tab where we had talked about the hundred thousand as the place marker for the fund balance.
Yes.
I mentioned this to Eric yesterday. I saw that at the top. Maybe I'm looking at a wrong spreadsheet. I saw the hundred thousand at the top. When you go down to the bottom and you calculate, I just don't have it in front of me to give you a line, but when you go down to the bottom, where it says fund balance twenty-two, twenty-three year, I thought I saw two hundred and fifty thousand there.
So, row forty-two, so this should be.
I'm gonna open up the spreadsheet on my.
So this should be the spreadsheet from Eric dated April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Okay, row forty-two, use of fund balance, two fifty was for twenty-one, twenty-two. And then the green.
You're right, and this for twenty-two, twenty-three, two fifty. You're right. That's a good.
Thank you. I knew I saw it, but I did a check today, Eric, and I saw it again, so I wanted to bring it up because that'll affect the calculation. Maybe.
Wait a minute. Are you talking about the green column, column I?
Let me.
No, she's talking about line seventy-eight.
Thank you.
Row H.
Oh, seventy-eight. Okay, seventy-eight.
Oh, okay, because up on forty-two, it's right.
Yeah, okay, I'm on forty-two too. Okay, so you're saying seventy-eight, column H, that two fifty should be one hundred.
One hundred.
Okay. Good catch. Legalize. All right.
And I don't remember, by the way, did we talk about putting a hundred there?
We talked about a placeholder for a hundred.
Okay, I've obviously forgotten, sorry.
Well, I can't remember what I did yesterday, Rob, so.
Right.
All right. Any other things that anybody saw?
We're getting that feedback again. I don't know what's going on.
Sounds like somebody's television almost like. All right. All right, um. Other than that, Eric, I have one other question for you. On the mill rate calculation, your row sixty-five.
Correct.
And you have the difference, the calculation to make up the difference between what the actual mill rate was and what we charged. I get the difference between the two mill rates is zero point one three, not zero point one two.
Well.
And then you have it multiplying it by two seventy-one, four, four, seven, and the spreadsheet says one mil for that year was two seventy-one, four, four, six. So can you just check that math and make sure we've got the right numbers going into that calculation? Sure. Well, I get thirty-six mils. Subtract thirty-five point eight seven is zero point one three.
Okay.
So. So if we can just make sure, and then the mil, the dollar amount, the two seventy-one, four, four, seven in column J. The spreadsheet says on line sixty-two, column G, that it was two seventy-one, four, four, six. So if we can just fix that note and the calculation, because I think you have that calculation going into the mill rate calculation.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have it minusing one point one oh four, and it's gonna be a hair more.
I will redo the calculation.
All right. Okay.
It's at most gonna change the mill rate by point oh one.
Right, it's like nothing, but. All right. All right, um, does anybody have any questions on the spreadsheet? On the budget or anything that anybody wants to talk about? Joanne?
I'm gonna have a couple things that I'd like to discuss, but I don't always want to be, you know, I don't know if anyone else wants to ask their question first. Um.
What do you want to jump to the front of the line?
I know, because I have several. I don't want to. I guess basically, I don't know, I don't see anyone unmuting. Is the seven oh seven number, is that Marina?
The phone number?
Phone number is Marina.
Okay. Hello Marina. Um. I I mean, I know we're gonna be open for discussion and all, but since we're talking about that mill rate page, and am I coming through clear to you all?
I can hear you, okay?
Thank you, because when I listen back to the tape on, that's posted on the website, a lot of times my, my speeches garble when I say something. And so I'm hoping that during the meeting, it's not like that. So thank you, I just wanted to make sure. So obviously, we're looking at this budget, just one overall thing that I wanted to say is, I was, you know, doing some calculations on the mill rate and different things. I know Eric will give us the final numbers, but, you know, we just need to, we know how much we have to raise by taxes and how much, you know, by looking at the sheets, what the percentages are going to be. Um, a thing that's making it seem less than it is, if we had this, if a mil was, if we didn't have the revow in town, this would be, I believe, between an eight and a nine percent increase. You know, so it's, it's pretty hefty.
Hold on, stop, stop, stop. The total amount we're asking by taxation is increasing in this budget five point seven percent. That's irrespective of the mill rate.
I'm not allowed to make a comment, Mr. Manager?
No, no, I'm just.
I didn't even finish.
Okay. Sorry.
I mean, I'm making, I, I just, you know, I just think I need to stop for a moment, so. Go ahead Diane. I just didn't even get a thought out. I ju, you know, you have no idea where I was going. I just was doing some calculations based on if a mil wa, you know, it's, so whatever we do approve eventually is based on the new, you know, the revow rates, and it's just so up and down, you never know. It's all I was gonna say. I mean, I really don't have, I have other questions that I was gonna say, I'm a little taken aback, so I'm kind of stumbling through my words. And you know, say we were trying to pass this much spending through and it wasn't a revow year, the increase would be, it would look a lot worse. Clearly, that is how you make a budget, and it's based on the new mill rate, the new revow list, the new grant list, whatever it is. I was just making an observation that it would have, you know, in a non-reval year, it would have been a lot higher.
I mean, I think that Eric's point is that in a non-reval year, five point seven percent increase would be, that's what it would be. Right?
That's all I meant. I don't know why I got the stop, 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 or whatever, so anyways.
Okay.
But respectfully respecting everyone's position, um. Yeah, that's, I mean, this is true numbers. I'm not saying it's not, it's just a big increase in spending, that's all. And I'll sit back. I do have more things to talk about, but I'm gonna take a moment.
Anybody else have any comments they want to share? No? Well, I'm looking at this budget and I'll just give a high level summary of how I think about it right now. You know, this is a budget coming off of budget year of zero percent increase last year, so this, um, budget reflects everything we need to do. Um, you know, it's a significant increase, but we had no increase last year. Um. So this is really something that's going to go to the taxpayers from my point of view and say, do you want to spend the money on what we need to do, get, get it done? So we can get the roadwork done and get what we need accomplished. So this is really, you know, a budget trying to accomplish the plan put in place by the Board of Selectmen to get the roadwork done and, you know, and keep pushing that envelope up. Um, we had a little derailment last year of not being able to get any increase put through last year. So this is kind of where we fall now, and I think it's up to the taxpayers to decide how they want to spend their money. When we get to referendum. Any other questions, comments? Joanne?
I have a question.
Go ahead Louise.
Are we gonna discuss the Andover school budget? Or is that?
I do believe. I, there is, okay, so what we can do is the school budget as it's presented is one number for us. We can't cut any specific line items, but we can cut the total dollar amount. You know, and make a change there if we so choose.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, but is that gonna happen prior to us? I mean, I'm okay with the way the budget is now presenting it to the town. But I didn't know if there was any outstanding questions or concerns about the, the school budget.
All right, um, I do have some concerns about the school budget. Um, and I will tell you since, um, and I'll just tell you where I'm coming from on that. Since the, um, move by the town to stop the shared financial service jobs. Um, I think we could easily cut twenty thousand dollars from the school budget because the position that's going to be left over the school is not a director or finance and treasurer of the town. Um, school can do whatever it wants with that position because it's their position after we go our separate ways as of June thirtieth, and they can do what they want, but if, you know, you were to hire, it's not the same job anymore. So really, it's not that high paying of a job, and the roles and responsibilities of that job has totally changed going forward. And I think it would be prudent to make a, an adjustment there and let the school figure out how they want to deal with it. I don't think it will impact the kids, it won't impact the quality of education, it's just an administrative job. And they can choose to do what they want with that job and craft it any way they want. It's their purview. But I don't think we need to fund it at the same level it was in the budget.
Are there gonna be?
Go ahead.
Are there gonna be any changes responsibility for her since?
Will only be working after June thirtieth, um, that director finance job is gone, so Sherri will only be working at the school and doing schoolwork. And we will go back to just having an assistant position, which will be Marina on the town side. And we did put a placeholder in the budget for a part-time treasurer.
Okay.
You know. So we do not need a full-time treasurer. We're too small in the town.
I think that makes sense Diane. Yep.
I agree with that as well.
Yeah, since I have one.
Go ahead, Joanne.
I'm sorry, did I miss any of the conversation at the beginning? If, um, I realize that there are, that was a great point Diane, and I know that they're changing the positions, and there won't be as many, you know, the responsibilities are gonna be different. So was there any conversation? Because we know that's not changing till the fiscal year ends. I mean, I know, I just, did I miss any conversation tonight to see if, you know?
No.
We're bored at mine, so I don't want to ask things that aren't appropriate to our topic tonight, but.
Oh, okay. As far as I know right now, there is just, you know, a whole transition going through from now until June thirtieth.
Right, because it's still staying the same until then, and then like you said, in next year's budget, the position's gonna be totally different and not be, so that makes perfect sense.
Okay.
So reducing that down, what would be the effect of the mill rate and the percentage of increase that we're asking for, for the town?
We made a change. It would be pretty small, twenty thousand.
I just plugged it into the spreadsheet. It did, um, it lowered the school budget increase a little bit to five point one percent, but it didn't really have any significant impact. It didn't change the decimal even on the overall budget impact unless I did the, unless I, the spreadsheet didn't propagate properly, but twenty thousand bucks is, uh, you know, out of a ten point, ten and a quarter million dollar budget, um, doesn't do much, but you know, look, every little bit counts and, uh, if that's what you guys want to do, that's fine. I assumed we would come here tonight and some people would have ideas for this or that. Uh, I personally am on board with the idea of, generally speaking, taking what we've got in front of us to the town and trying to explain that, as Diane said, after a zero budget last year, here we are. Um, but you know, that, that's it's not a big difference, I don't think.
All right, um. I'm gonna make a motion right now to reduce the school budget by twenty thousand dollars to four million one oh two, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Do I have a second?
I'll second it down.
Who, who said it first?
Someone else can.
Is that you, Rob?
That was Kurt.
Kurt, second, okay. So I made the motion Kurt second, and let's, any discussion? Do we want to have any discussion on this? Anybody have any questions or concerns?
No, basically, it just makes sense based on the conversation we just had. The position and the responsibilities are gonna be totally different, so we can't fund that position at that same level. That's all. Nothing to do with the school budget itself, just the change that, you know, that came about this year, so. That's my discussion. It makes sense.
Anybody else?
That, that number of ninety-three thousand seven thirty stood out, stood out to me. Um, is that, is that the actual salary that they had set for her at the school?
I believe if it's in that finance position on their budget, that is the salary for that job.
What do you gotta do to get it?
I don't know Kurt.
That's, that's an awful lot of money. It's more than she was making doing the duel.
No, I think that, I don't know what, that probably included a raise. I don't know what her current salary is now. But that was the, what was being budgeted going forward.
I agree Kurt, I'm not sure where the figure came from either. It was definitely lower the year before, so.
The year before figure was seventy-seven thousand, six hundred dollars, and I believe that was just Laura's job because Laura was still, I believe, employed when the budget was done last year for the school.
And I don't think her salary was included even as an FYI on the personnel spreadsheet that we got, so we can't tell.
Right. Okay. So, um, any more discussion on this? Call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kurt. Joanne?
Aye. Louise.
Yes. Okay, Rob?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. So there are one, two, three, four, five yeses, one abstention, no, no's. Motion passes. Okay. Um, if we can get that updated on the spreadsheet as well with those other corrections we have, um. And Eric, um, for you, do you want to correct the spreadsheet and then have us? Unless anybody has any other changes they want to make, um, have us vote on it next week? Or do you guys, you want to, guys want to see this spreadsheet one more time?
Diane, are we still discussing the budget in general?
Yes.
I was, I was letting the whole school talk go by, but I, I was gonna ask to see something since we're all together.
Okay.
The sheet, I, I mean, just to see, a few weeks back, I mean, like you said, I'm, I'm in favor of probably moving forward with the budget as it is, and then obviously, the townspeople and townsfolk are gonna have their say, but there was, um, Eric had provided us with something on the public works. Um. And I had it, that's why it was frustrating to me signing on tonight, because I had it that I had a couple of questions on. It might have been an overview of the dollar amount and what it's spent on, and it might have been in the Board of Selectmen packet.
Are you talking about the sheet that was put together that said what we spent last year, what we're gonna spend this year?
Yeah, yeah, and I just was, you know, since we were together, I was gonna kind of take a look at that because that's another, you know, a hot ticket item or a big ticket item that we know a lot of spending is going into. We've heard all the reasons. I'm not saying I'm, I totally understand what they're trying to get done, but that was something that I was gonna ask a couple of questions on my own, and then I just couldn't get my hands on it. Can we ask our town administrator if he might have that available to share with us?
Yeah, can look, it may be, take me a couple minutes to look through and see.
Can I apologize? I really wanted to have it in my hands, and I did earlier today, so.
Let me see if I have it really quick.
Thank you, because that gives us, in case I had any last minute questions on that budget-wise.
Let me go see if I have it, um.
I have everything else, but.
I did a quick search of my email. I'm not quite sure. How, how, how long ago was this?
I feel like it was a couple weeks ago.
It was when. Our presentation.
Was what Diane?
It was when we had the Public Works presentation.
Yes, yes.
Hold on. I have a roadwork report, hold on. Oh, I have it.
Thank you.
So. If I can share my screen, I can try that, doing that. Host disabled.
Hang on.
Oh.
Okay, you should be able to share now.
This. Can you guys see this? Can you see the screen?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, that's exactly what I'm.
So it's this, oh, this is just one year though. It's not the one with the updated.
Okay.
This is last year, and then the one for this year is like seven hundred thousand.
Okay.
I think that's a good document to track down though, for the purposes of the public hearing.
Yeah.
When you're talking about, you know, where's the, where's the meat in the town budget this year, right? Public Works is it. So, you know, this is your backup, well, the, sorry, this year's version of this document is your backup in a way to discuss it with the public to say, look, you know, this is why, you know, we're increasing the Public Works expenditure to get some things done, to try to catch up. You know, I, I'm sure anybody in town can think of a pothole somewhere or something more serious than that that they'd like addressed, and this might help us, uh, get through that.
No, I'm trying to find that document. I cannot find it.
I know, it was a two-page sheet. It really was.
I have it in hard copy, but I don't have it.
See, I can't get my hands on it, but I'm.
I have it in my phone, I don't have it in my directory here. All right, this is.
I mean, I'm sure we'll track it down.
Yeah.
Between everybody here. I, maybe it was, you know, Joanne mentioned something about the selectmen, maybe that's where it went, um, and got pulled from Diane. I don't know. I, I didn't see it in a quick purse of my emails, but frankly, I get behind it, things get buried, so.
Right, right, right.
That document, that document was presented to the Board of Finance first. And, and last month or the month before, when the Board of Selectmen had questions, I just forwarded them the same note from J to them.
Right.
So you did get that. Um, I'm trying to see whether I can find it real quick.
Yeah, we definitely have it.
But I can't remember where I saved it to. Oh crap.
And if we don't get our hands on it, I mean, I'll, I'll find it, I'll find it afterwards, and my questions can be answered. It is, it just tells the needs of the town. One other thing while you're looking, I would just like to see, since this probably won't be a long meeting tonight, I'd love to see the, um, if, if someone could share the revised, what we would be, you know, just that revenue sheet and shows the mill rate and all the things that I was bringing at the beginning of the the meeting. Just to kind of visually look at it again and make sure that I'm not forgetting, are we able to do that, share that one? Because we found that one fun balance, different thing that I brought up, so I just kinda wanna make sure there wasn't anything else that I was gonna question.
Oh, you're looking for this?
I think I may have found it. Okay, so, I got an email here, Friday, March 18th, uh, from Eric, with two documents attached. The second one is a two-page document, three-page actually, sorry, document. It does start with the 2021 Road and Tower Roadwork Cost Report, but if you scroll down, there's the 2022, 2023 Road Improvement Request. Uh, and that is 707,500. So I have it here. If anybody wants to go through their emails, it's, it's March 18th, from Eric.
I do not have that in my emails right now. I just cleaned out.
I suppose I could hit reply to all and pass it back on. Or, uh, if you want me to share my screen, I mean.
Either way, I mean, I know I'm jumping around, at some point, I wanna look at this document. And then, maybe since Diane has this up, can we look at this? And then, we could.
This is the revenue tab from the budget worksheet.
Yeah.
What do you wanna look at here?
So we're I wanna make it, let me make mine bigger.
All right, I just, I just forwarded, replied to all on that, and sent it, and hopefully, the attachment comes through.
Thanks, Rob, for doing that.
I got it, Rob.
Thank you.
Is the attachment in there, Kurt? Sometimes my Gmail's weird about that.
Oh, no, maybe not. Nope, no attachment.
Hold on, I'm looking.
No attachment.
All right, I'll, I'll fix that, give me a sec, you guys talk about this.
Yeah. So my only questions, Diane, were, I'm assuming is this, the changes have been made, right?
And go in and make those changes, right, so.
Right, and then, right, so we'll make those changes, and then we'll look at the final numbers, that what we're.
And then we'll have a final workbook.
Okay.
An Excel spreadsheet, does that work for everybody?
Yes.
And then everybody, you know, it shouldn't be long. It should be fairly quick for Eric to make those changes, so then we'll have, you know, a few days to look at it over, and then we can review everything and make our final decision next Wednesday, because it's on the agenda. Are you good with that, guys, or?
That sounds fine with me, yeah. Yeah, I guess if I had had any, that's fine with me, thank you for bringing this back up. I thought there was something else I was gonna point out, but there isn't, it was just that one. I knew it was in one place and the other. So thank you for that, and then, yeah, I guess I just wanted an overview of looking at the Public Works document, if someone, but you don't have that now, or you do?
Still working on, hold on. I don't know why I can't find it, hold on. I don't have that one in my email. So.
I made the mistake of closing it, and now I'm, you know, I'm losing it in the clutter, give me a, give me a minute, and I'll find it.
Just quickly scrolling through my stuff to see if I can pick it out real quick. Oh, yippee. Nope, I don't have them in here.
What was the date, that email?
March 18th. I have the email, but it doesn't have an attachment. Oh, here we go. I got it, I got it. Okay, let's go back to this. I'm sharing my screen again. This is the one.
Yep, and I just attached it to an email. I, I, I had to download it off of, it's so bizarre, I went into my sent folder, the email I sent you all, in my sent folder, the attachment shop. So I pulled it from there. Anyway, this is the, this is it, because, yeah, page one has this, but then if you scroll down.
Yeah, and then page two starts 22, 23. So Joanne, can you see that? Oh, you're on mute. So what was your question?
I think I just wanted to look it over. If I had any questions of it, so. Again, I appreciate all of you looking and putting it up there. I knew, like Rob, kind of surmised for me, or summarized for me, that it is one of our big ticket items, that, you know, a lot of questions will come on for that, so I wanted to be prepared, that's all, so I, now that we all know we at least have it, I wanna look at that.
Yep, and again, you know, hopefully this time the email has an attachment.
Thank you.
So you should be able to pull it up yourself.
I appreciate it.
No.
All right, um. Any other questions that anybody has, or anybody wanna make any comment on the budget as it stands right now? Plans are, go ahead, Louise.
Would it be possible to put that document we just brought up onto the website? So in case people have questions ahead of time?
The Public Works document?
Yeah, on the budget. On the, and oversight, under the budget issues. Can we do that?
I think it's in the Board of Selectmen packet already, but I don't know, you know.
It would be the worst thing to have it with the budget, uh, but I could go either way on that. I just think it should definitely be a part of our presentation.
Right, I mean, the presentation hasn't been created yet, so, for the.
That's why I'm saying it. We have to, we still have to create it, so.
Right, right, so. All right, um. Anybody else have any questions, concerns, anything on this budget that you wanna talk about? Plans are to have Eric make the changes we talked about tonight, the corrections and the change to the school. And then we'll get a clean spreadsheet out to everybody. And then, we will talk about this in the meeting on Wednesday, next Wednesday.
Diane, I am formulating a question, if you give me a minute, I'm sorry. I just have a, so I wanna ask it in the right way.
Okay, all right.
Because I'm gonna be talking, I'm gonna ask, um, Erica a quick question, but I wanna formulate it right. Thank you for allowing me a moment.
So next Wednesday, that's the, um, that dead date for us to.
Approve the budget to send it to the annual town meeting, right?
Eric, if I could ask you a quick question, when I was looking at, you know, the employee spreadsheet and the personnel spreadsheet, which goes over hours and different things, I know we have the salaries. Is there the, the people such as like the zoning agent, the wetlands agent, guys that maybe work 10 hours a week, are they involved in, they're not in MRF, right? They, they follow the 20-hour rule as well?
Correct. They're not eligible for any benefits.
Because I know, so let me just make sure there's no one else I wanna ask about. And I know that we raised the hour for the building department person, the bill, not the secretary, but the actual building official, what is his current hours per week that we raised it to?
Uh, seven.
Seven?
Correct.
Thank you, all right. And someone like, that's at the transfer station and does 17 hours per week, so no benefits there?
Correct.
I sound like I'm a scrooge, I don't want to, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding that it's a definite flat, 20 hours or above could be eligible, but anybody that I see on this spreadsheet that's under 20 hours would not be.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. That's what I, that's all I would have, Diane.
All right. Anybody else? Kurt, Louise, Rob?
I had, I had a question, uh, probably for Eric, who's, uh, who's our clerk tonight?
Marina's our clerk tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I, I'm good for now, and, um, you know, I, I think we gotta take it to the town, and see how things go. I'm loathe to take a preemptive whack at this.
Okay.
That's just my perspective, very different than last year.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on. Um, I don't have any correspondence, anybody get anything that they need to share? No, okay. Okay, Eric, we're at public speak, if we can go around.
Okay, uh, first up, Val Bruno.
And Jerry's here.
If I could go first, being the Board of Education Chairman, I'm kinda disappointed that the Board of Finance felt the need to cut us $20,000. I'm also very disappointed that you don't trust our board to come up with a responsible budget in a responsible way to support our school and to keep it going. I, I, I just don't understand this. I know that we've, if we come in with a zero increase, it still doesn't matter. You all want to cut the budget. We can't keep going in this direction. Our expenses go up, salaries go up, and you know as well as I do that in your own personal households, your expenses go up as well. And if you are working for a salary for a dollar per hour, or whatever dollar per hour you work for, you'll find that with inflation going on right now, you probably are having a tough time. And if you're on a fixed income, you're also having a tough time. It's the reality of the economy and our town. I support our town. I will go out of my way to support what the Board of, what the Board of Education wants, and I will support whatever the town Board of Selectmen want. I know it's important. I know it's important when I drive up Hendy Road every day, and down Hendy Road. I know it's important when I see what's going on, on the roads and the bridges. And I know that people cost money. And you have to pay people a fair wage. And I am supportive of this town. I will go to my savings account to pay you, that's in taxes, what you need to support this town. We need to be together, and the divisiveness is just not a good thing. And I hope that you will take that with you and think about it, and put it in your heart. Because it's disappointing with that kind of behavior that goes on. And that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
I'm equally as disappointed that, uh, the motion was made to address what is really a school personnel budgetary issue. I know that the town had requested multiple positions, because the town knows what they need. I'm disappointed that the reasoning is that we feel as a, a Board of Finance that that person's job is, is up to us to decide what their responsibilities are going to be. Yes, previous to the merger that was made, this cooperative agreement that was made between the town and the school, prior to my even getting hired, the business person that worked here worked a .8. But since that person has left, we have been in constant transition. Everything, you know, we got a new system admins, so it wouldn't have mattered if it was the former finance person or the current finance person, they would have needed time to adjust to that. We have been in transition with the audit, and we've been in transition with the budget and the negotiations that we had last year. And so, I'm hurt that the Board of Finance would say, we don't think that that personnel person on the Board of Ed deserves to be full-time, when that is a decision that's made on the school side for this year. And so, I am disappointed, and I, I feel that that was a little bit of a personal, um, situation that was, that was brought about, but, um, I going forward would, you know, just like to be on the record as stating that, um, I do believe that that position being in transition, uh, and the mere fact that it's gonna start July 1, which is when the new school year begins to un-merge and go back to what it was with all of these changes now from what it once was, is, is unfair.
Okay, thank you, Val. Next up, Tim B. Tim? Going once, going twice, okay, next up on my screen, Anne Creme.
I feel the same way as Jerry and Valerie that, uh, we, you should not have cut that $20,000. That's the Board of Ed budget, and they spent a lot of time getting that budget just right, and then I don't think that you understand what it is to cut that. And I think we, it was wrong to have cut that, that's all.
Diane, thank you, and next up on my screen, Kimberly Person.
Hi, everyone, thank you for your time tonight. I completely agree with the cut, and I appreciate Diane doing that. I also didn't have time to send a letter to the Board of Finance, but I will be sending one. I agree with the cut completely. Thank you.
Hey Diane, that seems to be all the public that's on my screen.
Okay. All right, um, any other members of the Board of Finance have any other comments or questions or any concerns they wanna air? If not, we're ready for adjournment, can I have a motion for adjournment?
Wait a minute, there's, there's a Tim B. on the screen as well, is that public?
Um, Eric did call on him, but he did not respond.
Oh, I didn't hear that one, okay.
Okay, Joanne?
I just wanna make sure, so we're saying that. I just want to make sure, so we're saying that we'll circle back to this next week. You know, with those adjustments, we've all made our decision on what we're gonna put forward, so well, that will be part of our regular meeting, right? And that's enough time before the public meeting date that's already been established, right? I'm sure.
Yes, we have to take action on the budget next week. That's our drop dead date.
Okay, that was it, thanks.
Any other comments? Any other questions?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the note, motion to adjourn.
Okay Louise, motion to adjourn, can I have a second?
Second it.
One second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye, aye.
Aye. Thanks Diane for stepping up.
Thanks. Thanks everybody, see you next week.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Bye-bye.